Okay, we'll call it to order this November the ninth, two thousand and sixteen, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
President.
Vice Chair Renaud?
President.
Chair Howard?
President.
Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Dunn.
President.
Okay, if you'll all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Scott Dickinson of the Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I guess when Joy called me way back to do this, this day's prayer, I should have looked at my calendar, not realizing it was the day after Election Day. But we got up this morning, the sun's shining, the wind's out there, and I just wanted to read a short scripture to remind us what, as believers, as Christians, what we're supposed to do, no matter who's in charge. It says in, in First Timothy, it says, "Therefore exhort, first of all, that supplications, prayers, intercession, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings, all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and reverence." And that's my, my prayer is that with all this, all this political stuff kind of rolling down now, that we live in peace and prayer. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you this morning for the day you've given us, another beautiful day. And I wake up in the county and I see the sun and I walk outside and it's beautiful. And Lord, we've been through a, a season of politics, of commercials and all of those things, and yesterday was the day to, that we made it count. And Lord, whatever side people are on, I pray that we would just find peace, that we'd find understanding, that we'd find a common ground and work forward to make our, our county and our city and our state and our country the best that it could be. Lord, watch over us. Watch over these are leaders of our county. Give them a, a vision, give them knowledge, give them wisdom. And Lord, for our city as well, and Lord, for each of us and the jobs that we do. Watch over and protect us. Thank you again for what you do for us. And thank you for the wonderful place that we get to live in, called Franklin County. And we pray all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Okay, takes us to correspondence and organizational business. Today, under the correspondence and organizational business, we want to recognize Ethel Wallace, the Juvenile Detention Director, for her twenty-five years of service. And we have a plaque to present Ethel. After we present the plaque and get some pictures, we'll take about ten minutes, and we have some punch and cake in the back, and everybody can congratulate Ethel and wish her the best back there. And then we'll re, reconvene the meeting and...
At eight forty-five?
At eight forty-five, we'll come back into the meeting. Ethel, you want to come up? You got your speech ready?
(laughing).
Okay, this plaque says, "Appreciation and recognition of dedicated service for Franklin County, Kansas, Ethel Wallace, Juvenile Detention Director from nineteen ninety-one to twenty sixteen." This one's kind of special. We've been quite a ways back. In my time, I can remember a long time ago, we were going to, over at the Sheriff Department in a little room, late at night, calling you for what we're supposed to do with this juvenile that we have, and we don't know what to do with these. So, yeah, it's kind of special. And thank you for your service and wish you the best. Do you want to step out here with your speech?
You need to make this lower. I know you do.
Well, I am a shorty.
Okay, forget it.
Oh, I think Cleon, Cleon wants to take a picture right there.
Okay, we're back in the regular meeting, back in session at eight forty-five. It takes us to public comment. We do have a couple signed up. Okay. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Jean?
Jean Hurt, one oh seven Jefferson Street in Pomona, Kansas. I also would want to reiterate what Mr. Dickinson said. I'm glad that this ordeal that we've experienced, all this last, what, eight, nine months, is over with. I, I didn't get no sleep last night, or this morning, as you might say, because I was at the courthouse with Mr. Howard and others. But I have to say that I hope that our county, our state, and the United States will be able to come together now and do what's right for our, for the people of our nation. Me as one, I worked for, as most of you know, for the federal complex in Kansas City. I had a Q clearance. And I have no admiration for Mrs. Clinton because of what she did to the emails and our classified documents, for one. And the second thing is, now we're going to get a new commissioner, too. So, I'm proud of the people that they voted, and I hope that we can all heal, as I said before. So, I have. Thank you.
Rick?
Good morning, Commissioners. I just want to say that addressing the issue of the recall...
Rick, you give us your name and address.
Richard Oglesby from five twenty-seven South Cherry in Ottawa, Kansas. Addressing the issue of the recall, I just wanted to say that this was never a personal issue. This was never a vendetta. This was simply an evaluation of performance. And there is no animosity held toward anybody. We simply, as a group of voters, did an evaluation of performance. And I wanted to say thank to Commissioner Harris for the years of service that he did give to the county. And I know that it took a lot of time away from his family, a lot of time that he could have been doing other things, just like you guys have, donated your time or given your time. I know that it is a sacrifice that he has made, and I would just like to say thank you for those years of service. And I wish him the best in his ventures at the VA and, and hope that he can perform well there to help our veterans. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, it takes us to items of business. First item of business, consider increasing the health care flexible spending amount, maximum employee contribution limit from two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to two thousand six hundred dollars for the plan years beginning on or after January the first, two thousand seventeen. Joanne?
Good morning, Commissioners. The item before you today is, per IRS regulations, they are increasing the amount for the flexible spending account for medical expenses from twenty, or twenty-five, twenty-five fifty to two thousand six hundred dollars. The reason it is brought before you is because it is a liability against the county. Money will be put into the account for each employee who elects to participate in the flexible spending account. Money then is deducted from their paychecks to reimburse the county for that expense.
Pretty cut and dried there, but anyone have any questions for Joanne on this? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the changing the flexible spending amount from twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and fifty to two thousand six hundred.
Make a motion to adopt the new IRS maximum health care flex spending maximum of two thousand six hundred dollars for plan years beginning on or after January one, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion's a second?
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number two, consider appointing one new member to the Franklin County Planning Commission.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In September of this year, we had three members of the Planning Commission who had served out their terms. The maximum number of terms that you're allowed to serve under the current bylaws is two, three-year terms. We had three commissioners that had served those. In the first part of October, you reappointed two of those that requested consideration for a reappointment, but that left one vacancy. We have given notice that we had a vacancy on the, the Planning Commission. And then first of November, we did receive a letter from Don Barkley, who's here this morning, requesting to be appointed to the Planning Commission. Don is from the Pomona area. We don't really have anyone from the, the western part of the county, so we are pleased to see at least someone finally stepping up and having an interest to serve on the Planning Commission from that area. As the Board of County Commissioners agrees with my recommendation, I would ask that you appoint Don this morning, have him sworn in as the Planning Commissioner, so he can attend our meeting next week. We have a number of items on that agenda, and, and we would hope that he would have the opportunity, if appointed, to review that agenda and the materials, so he would be eligible and, and up to speed to, to vote on those matters. Don is here this morning.
Anything you'd like to say, Don, for the commission?
Happy to be here.
We appreciate you stepping up and being willing to serve on this, this commission. Anyone have anything for Don, anything? If not, I would look for a motion to approve Don Barkley to the Planning Commission.
Go move.
Second. Have a motion in a second, Joe.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, you want to swear, Mr. Barkley?
Do that right after the meeting. Is that okay?
You could. Are you in a hurry?
All right, let's get back to the items here. I think we're going to be with, Larry's going to be with us for a while, looking at the agendas. Getting back there, Larry. Okay, item number three is the approval of a rezoning application, number sixteen oh eight dash fourteen twenty-one, to rezone approximately twenty-eight acres from an A2 Transitional Agriculture Zoning District to a RE Residential Estate Zoning District.
As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is a request to rezone approximately twenty-eight acres from the agricultural zone to a residential zone. The purpose for this is to allow for the division of the twenty-eight acres into four tracts. This would be, so that it can be distributed to family members. There is an existing house where the Clancys currently reside, and they are actually going to create three additional tracts. We have reviewed that for compliance with the county's zoning regulations, our comprehensive plan, and the next matter on your, on your agenda this morning is the subdivision plant. And we have reviewed this in accordance with those provisions also. The Planning Commission, after reviewing this, did find that it did satisfy all of the current criteria, both the county comprehensive plan and zoning regulations, and therefore are forwarding a recommendation to the county commissioners to adopt a resolution approving, amending the county's official zoning map to rezone this property from the A2 Agricultural Transitional District to the RE Residential Estate Zone.
And I'm sure you've had all the, published it and no neighbors come present with any problems?
We did. There is one situation that was somewhat unique. The very northwestern part of this property, even though it's in one of the water districts that currently is serving the southerly portions, does not want to extend a water line across the creek. However, the adjoining water district has forwarded a letter indicating that they would serve this on, on request whenever they're ready to develop. Even though it's not in their district, both districts have agreed that this would be a better solution than trying to cross the creek with the water lines and things of that nature. So, it did meet the, the criteria of our, one of our goals of the comprehensive plan, that you have the ability to provide a potable water supply. So, that was the only really unique thing as far as the rezoning was concerned.
Any questions on this? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the rezoning of approximately twenty-eight acres from an A2 to an RE Residential Estate Zoning District. Go move. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, item number four is the approval of final plat for Clancy Estate subdivision, located at the intersection of Oregon Road and K-68 Highway. On the east side of Oregon Road and on the north side of K-68 Highway, in the west, twenty-eight acres of the southwest quarter of section twenty-six Township sixteen, south range twenty east. Everyone got all that?
Well, as, as we discussed just on the earlier matter, the Clancys are dividing the property into four tracts. One of those is their existing residence, which is fronting out in the area of K-68 Highway and Oregon Road. The other three tracts are going to be given to their children. They have two sons, and they want to divide the property not only in area equally, but all the amenities associated with that. And that is the, the wooded areas, as well as the, the creek areas and so on. So, we will note on that subdivision plant, kind of a very unique design, and that's because it's following the creek system with that angle that you see between lots four and three. And it's dividing that property equal as far as the various amenities are concerned. This is something that the Planning Commission looked at very, very carefully, but it was determined that this would be about the only way that you could probably equally divide, so that you got the wooded areas, the hillside, and the areas that are subjected to flood plain and so on, that would be divided equally between the two brothers. So, while it's unique, it does satisfy all of our minimum standards, and therefore, the Planning Commission has approved the subdivision that is here this morning for your consideration to accept any easements and right of ways that are shown on the face of the plat.
No calls from any surrounding landowners or anything on this?
No.
Is this all surveyed out?
That is a survey.
Full survey?
Yes. The subdivision is the actual survey that was done by Mr. Kate.
Questions on this? Okay, if not, I would look for approval of the final plat for the Clancy Estate subdivision, located at the intersection of Oregon Road and K-68 Highway.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Item number five is the approval of a zoning application, sixteen oh nine dash fourteen twenty-four, to rezone approximately ten point four six acres from an A1 Agriculture Zoning District to an RE Residential Estate Zoning District.
As you've indicated, this is a request to rezone approximately ten acres from the A1 Agricultural Zone to the RE Residential Estate Zone. The purpose for this rezoning was to allow for the merger of the ten point four acres that's being considered for rezoning here this morning, to the one acre site that currently has a residence. This does bring that site then into compliance with the county's overall regulations, the county's minimum standards for allowing onsite sanitation, the county's minimum standards for residences in the rural area. So, we see this as being a movement in the right direction for a change. Certainly is something that was supported by the Planning Commission, and they have forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners to approve a resolution amending our official county zoning map to rezone this approximately ten point four acres from the A1 to the RE Residential State Zone. We did give notice to, I think, eighteen surrounding property owners. There wasn't anyone that testified at the public hearing for or against the rezoning.
Any questions on this one? Look for a motion to approve the rezoning application, sixteen oh nine dash fourteen twenty-four, to rezone approximately ten point four six acres.
Go move.
Motion is a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. I'll get those after this.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's it, Larry.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number six, consider approving replacement of the DVRs for the camera system in the jail, utilizing funds from the equipment reserve. Chair?
Morning, Commissioners. This is a, a project in the jail that we have discussed at a study session. You've seen the cost for the total project replacement for, for our security system and operation system in the jail, which is just under two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. And that is not what we're requesting today. What we're requesting is a, a bid at eighty thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars to replace the DVRs in our, in our jail for our camera system. As you know, we are an indirect supervision jail, which means that we, part of what we do is we watch things through, through a lot of the cameras. That helps keep our staffing down, and then also allows us to keep our security at the level that where we want it. And the DVRs that we have are currently, it's, it has become an outdated technology, and that equipment is needing to be replaced. So, although this says upgrade, we don't really have an option to do anything other than upgrade because of the status of the equipment is there now. This is more of a critical item for how we operate business, how we do business. And it is at the point where we're going to, we need to get something done right away. So, our jail administrator, Justin Watkins, is here. If you have any questions for him directly on how this, the current situation's impacting our operations or any, anything like that.
Questions. We, we've talked about this, and I think we all are aware of the situation and so forth. And one thing, just let know that the sheriff was advised not to budget this, that this would be taken care of differently. And that's what we're going to do, is take care of it then. So, anyway, that's why it's coming up to be, coming out of the equipment reserve.
That'd be because it is kind of a one-time, well, they have a lifespan, and you don't always know exactly what that lifespan is going to be, but it just didn't make sense for you to budget under normal operations. And we kind of considered it more of a capital expenditure.
Right.
But the information we have, it definitely falls under a need, not a, not a want or a wish list. It's a, it's a need.
Okay, anything else on this?
No, I think we've been over it.
Okay, if not, I would look for a motion to approve utilizing funds in the amount of eighty thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars from the equipment reserve to replace the DVRs on the cameras at the jail.
Go move.
Motion is a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, Sheriff's going to stay with us. Item number seven, discuss use of the sheriff funds to purchase a Polaris Ranger XP nine hundred.
Okay, again, we've, this is a, an item that we did also discuss during a, a study session. We had applied for a grant to, to purchase a utility vehicle for the primary purpose of patrolling the, the trails through Franklin County. We were awarded a grant. It is an eighty percent matching grant. So, we've been approved for a total purchase, total project cost of twenty-seven thousand eighty-six dollars and with a maximum reimbursement of twenty-one thousand six sixty-eight eighty. Lieutenant Hall took care of this proj, of this grant process for the sheriff's office, worked with the admin, the people administering the grant, and what they came down to, everything that met the requirements and everything that they needed, is the Polaris Ranger. And so, this grant also includes not just the vehicle, but the trailer to haul it, and then all the emergency equipment that will be added to it. As we discussed, at our study session, we had a couple different ways to go on this. And the reason that it was, we're bringing it to you is where the sheriff budget is, is tight, and we are on track. However, if, if we spend twenty-seven thousand and we do not get this reimbursement in before the end of this budget year, we're likely to be over a little bit on the sheriff budget. But as we discussed, the other two budgets that fall under, under my responsibility, we have enough in there that we will be able to absorb that overage. And we just wanted to let you know that if we are over in that, in that budget, that that is, that would, that's what we're looking at. But overall, which with the three budgets that fall under, under my office, we, we will be still in under budget on that. So, for the, for the year. After talking with the administrator, he didn't think that we're, really there was going to be any action that would be necessary. But also, I wanted to make sure that we talked, because my budget authority does stop at what is bu, what is budgeted, and we are likely to, to go over that a little bit in this one if we don't get that reimbursement in, so.
Like you said, we did talk about this at the study session. I think everybody's, was pretty well up on what the whole situation was, about the reimbursement after, and so forth. Is there any questions on this?
What was the price of the trailer?
The only price that I have specifically, Commissioner, is the, is, is just the vehicle itself. And I have that at twenty-one, five ninety-two fourteen. So, I, I don't have the exact breakdown of what they approved for the trailer. I don't know.
Okay, would look for a motion to approve the use of the sheriff funds to purchase the Ranger XP nine hundred, the amount of twenty-seven thousand eighty-six dollars. Go move. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, last item today is consider awarding the bid of a Letha Dodge in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the noxious weed truck.
Morning, Commissioners. You authorized listing bids at your regular meeting on October nineteenth. Seven bids were received and opened on November fourth in the clerk's office. The bid of a Letha Dodge is the lowest and best bid received. The request is a motion awarding the bid to a Letha Dodge in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
What, is it one ton, forty-five hundred, fifty-five hundred, what?
No, it'd be a two-ton.
It's two-ton.
Two-ton, four-wheel drive.
And we did discuss there would be, the truck now will be pulling Purple Wave, correct?
No, the truck will be transferred up to Public Works, and we'll put it to good use.
Then a Public Works truck will go on Purple Wave?
We have at least one that'll go on Purple Wave.
Any questions on this? If not, would look, a motion to award the bid to a Letha Dodge is the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the noxious weed truck.
Motion to approve that, second purchase.
Motion in a second, Joe.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, takes us to staff reports. No counselor, no administrator. Larry, you got anything? Anything else?
Nothing, except we have a planning commission meeting next Thursday at six thirty.
Once again, we want to thank you for coming forward to serve on that commission. Sheriff? Sheriff? Where we at, alley? You got anything? Going fast now. Jim?
No, sir.
Have you got anything going on?
I just wanted to say we're planning on doing the canvas probably at nine. Um, Rick said before the meeting, we'd do a study session on Monday and then do the canvas right after that. So, and if anyone's interested in that, um, canvas of the election Monday morning, approximately nine o'clock in the courtroom upstairs at the courthouse.
Just, we can get to that right now. We're going to be gone, uh, some of us to a conference next week, so Wednesday will there not be a meeting? So what we're going to do, Monday morning, we'll have a study session at 8:30. We'll go out of the study session and open up a, a meeting on Monday morning. We have a couple of things we need to discuss and approve. So we'll do a study session and then into a regular meeting on Monday, and then that'll take care of next week. And then after the meeting, we'll go to the courthouse to do the canvas. Okay?
Back to lunch?
I'll get pizza, but you're, we're going to need a lunch.
All right, I guess that takes us to Commissioner comments and board reports. What do you want to start?
Yes, I'm at the Chamber Commerce Board meeting on Tuesday morning. And main two things they're talking about is replacing the, the roof on the chamber building and, uh, or repair it, patch it. And I just decided to, uh, replace it and have the payment over two budget years, this year and the next year. And the Young Entrepreneur Academy they're trying to form is, uh, working on that and getting, uh, sponsorships. Sponsor, uh, kid to do that is about $700. And they're trying to get, they've got, uh, uh, some sponsorship already from, uh, some companies, and they're going forward with that, and they'd like to get about 15 kids from the county to take part in this, uh, Young Entrepreneur Academy. That's two main things they talked about.
Anything else?
Call them.
What's the dad?
I attended Wellsville's chamber meeting yesterday at lunch, and, uh, they discussed their upcoming Christmas, uh, events, and also the past, uh, car show they had, as well as their wine and brew event. Uh, the funds that they raised from them and voted, uh, how to use some of those funds and what to keep back for their budget. Pretty much it.
Okay, uh, Monday, I attended Williamsburg City Council meeting. Most, uh, they talked about a donation for candy for their, uh, Christmas parade and, and party. Talked about getting their lights up on, their Christmas lights up, and when they were going to do that, and how they were going to do it. Um, they're looking at possibly, uh, adding a new shelter to the park. Um, I think the, uh, school's going to help them with that, and, uh, they were discussing that. They tabled that for a later date till they can get some more ideas on what type of shelter they want to build. They had their annual inspection of their lift stations. They reported on what that was, what was discovered there. And that was most of that meeting. And then last night, I attended a, uh, city council meeting at Richmond. It was pretty short. Um, they talked about renewing their Blue Cross Blue Shield for their employees, and they talked about the ATV situation in town. Williamsburg also talked about that. Their, some of the small towns are addressing the ATVs and golf carts and so forth, and what they need to do and what they can't do with, with that situation. So that was the two meetings I was at. Um, you will notice on the agenda, if you got it, that we were scheduled to go in the executive session, attorney-client privilege, and being our attorneys not here, we will not be doing that. So with that, unless someone has something to add, we would look for a motion to adjourn.
I just, I just wanted to add, uh, this Friday is Veterans Day, and one of our close schools, uh, Blue Springs, Missouri, school is going to Hawaii, uh, sometime this, the next few weeks, uh, take part in the 75th anniversary of the invasion by Japan and Hawaii. And all of those World War II veterans now are, are about 1,500, 1,000 to 1,500 World War II veterans dying every day. So you see a World War II veteran just thanking for his service, because we're running out of those veterans. And there is a lot of, uh, activities on Veterans Day. You know, Appin is just having a, having a luncheon in Central Heights, uh, Wellsville. So there's a lot of, uh, activities for veterans, uh, this Friday. That's all I know.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Not opposed.
We're adjourned.